Twenty Second Street and Hermosa Avenue. Next slide, please. And finally, here we see seven properties on Manhattan Avenue between Thirty Third and Long Flo- Fellow. Next slide, please. As previously noted, the Planning Commission did remove all references to the C two designation in the draft ordinance. Discussion included noting that this type of use was more akin to that of a residential type use. And that residential uses are not permitted in the C two zoning district. Given that third-party companies that facilitate fractional ownership or timeshare uses typically do not build residential units, but rather buy existing housing stock. Allowing this use in a district where residential uses are not allowed posed problematic issues for implementation and enforcement of non-compliant timeshare use to residential, for example. Next slide, please. The next couple of slides illustrate locations of properties that are Zone C two. Here we see properties located along Hermosa Avenue between Eighth Street and Sixteenth Court, including properties on Pure Plaza. There is an additional C two property near the intersection of Pure Avenue and Valley Drive located in the upper right of the slide. Next slide, please. There are ten properties Zone C two along Artesia Boulevard and Prospect Avenue. Next slide, please. And finally, there is one property Zone C two at the corner of Greenwich Village and Hermosa Avenue. Next slide, please. This slide shows a zoning map for the entire city. The mid-range pink are the C two properties, the lighter pink, which are really hard to tell on this larger map, are the C one properties. And just for the community's reference in the council, the red properties are the the C three zone properties. Next slide, please. By focusing on the C one zoning district, the ordinance sought to protect the city's residential character and community, ensure housing units are not lost to these more transitory timeshare type uses. The housing type found in the C one zone is not a typical housing type that these emerging businesses typically target in their business model, but rather they focus on larger, single-family homes. Next slide, please. The draft ordinance is geared towards a specific use. As previously noted, it would not prohibit fractional ownership whereby multiple family members or friends own a single property together. It would prohibit a third party from buying existing housing stock, then selling shares in the corporate entity that owns the property or a fractional ownership share to more than one purchaser for use throughout the year. The draft ordinance would require conditional use permit, which would allow specific conditions be placed on the use of the property. And finally, the proposed amendments to the municipal code are exempt from CEQA as they represent administrative and implementation activities, and thus there would be no significant effect on the environment. Next slide, please. Enforcement would present a challenge as it does for other land uses in the city. However, the proposed ordinance would be an additional tool in the city's toolkit to try and obtain obtain compliance and would allow those looking to follow the rules the ability to do so. And again, the conditional use permit process would allow for discretionary review and the ability of the Planning Commission and or the City Council to include specific conditions approval on a case-by-case basis. Next slide, please. Staff recommend City Council wave full reading and introduce by title only the draft ordinance as described and determine that this action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions Council may have, as is Assistant City Attorney Donigan, who can thank for drafting the draft ordinance as well as the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of my colleagues have any questions? Mayor Perdomo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Naughton, for the presentation. So, according to this proposal, no existing residential use in the C one and C two commercial zones could be converted to a timeshare use. Is that correct?
Currently as drafted, the ordinance only contemplates conditionally permitted uses in the C one zone. Um, the residential uses could potentially, if they were condominium units, be purchased and turned into this type of fractional timeshare use. However, it's this type of unit that's built above um, commercial or non-residential, which is a typical product type that you see in the C one zone, is not a typical um, type of product that these bus- businesses purchase. Um, they tend to purchase large, single-family homes um, for their their business model. Um, housing is not currently allowed in the C two zone. Um, so if we were to allow timeshare you this type of use in the C two zone, um, that would really be more of a policy decision in determining that this type of use is less of a residential use and more of a commercial type use. Um, I think that that's one of the reasons that the Planning Commission took the C two out of the original draft ordinance that that it reviewed.
So why then didn't we look at C three? Is most of our hotels are now in C three, is that correct?
We do have several hotels in both C two and C three. Hotels, hotel use are outright permitted in C two and C three. Housing is not permitted in C two or C three.
Right, but I I look at this as not a re- this is more of a transient proposal than a residential proposal. To me, it's it's akin to short-term rentals, just by a different name. A- and and I'm wondering why we we we're looking at C one exclusively. Um, so back to my point with regard to uh, C one and mixed use. So I live directly across the street from a mixed-use facility. Ground floor is a law firm, three condominiums on top. So could I come in or could a company come in, buy that property, and then subdivide those three units into eight ownership pieces each under this proposal?
Residential uses in the C one zone are only allowed on not above a ground floor tenant space. So any residential uses that are existing at the ground floor in the C one are currently existing, non-conforming.
Okay, so the these residential are above the law firm right now as we speak. Mixed-use facility. Law firm first level, three condos, ti- uh, townhouses, whatever one, whatever they're called. Um, so my understanding then is that those could be converted under this scenario.
That that's correct.
That's right.
Yeah, and if Assistant City Attorney Donigan would like to to jump in, feel free as well.
Sure, yeah, so the short answer to your question is that, yes, if that's the C one zone as proposed, that is what it it is not geared towards, but that's what is conditionally permitted. So converted, I don't know if if maybe it's just my my brain, they would still need to go through the full discretionary process, they would still need to apply for a CUP, which is a discretionary um entitlement that requires a set a a certain number of findings. Um, once again, now to go to the Planning Commission first, and then, of course, to you all here at the City Council level. But the answer to your question, yes, if if as drafted, the ordinance was passed and it said, hey, we allow this in the C one zone, one of these businesses that that Director Naughton or, you know, any third-party non-purchaser, yes, could could buy one of the units and then offer it for sale, whether that be a one-eighth ownership, one-half-third, insert any number you you want. And then and then, you know, as long as it's permitted, it it would it would be allowed.
Okay, so a third party could do that. And also, if the five of us, the seven of us, and city clerk wanted to buy one, we could do the same thing, right? Then form an LLC and then hire a management company to run this LLC involving these three condominiums subdivided, sold into eighths. So I can de- I can either do it on the, excuse me, a an LLC could do this on the front side or on the backside. Right?
Correct, y- yes, and 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 I guess I'll speak for for myself when when I attended the Planning Commission meeting. And then when I got direction from from staff to to put this together, what this ordinance is is really geared towards is not, hey, how do how do you and your family and friends wanna own something? The city is not necessarily worried about that per se because people own houses and corporate entities. They own houses with siblings, friends, coworkers, all that stuff. We're not trying to regulate that. And from where I sit, I would cautiously advise anyone from attempting to regulate how people can own property, what they can do with their property. What this is directed towards is this emerging business model of third parties coming in, buying up valuable city housing stock, and then basically operating them. I know you said similar to a short-term vacation rental, I'm gonna I'm I'm gonna use it for an act in the ordinance as a timeshare use. Um, and and that's what this is really geared towards. It's not geared towards any arrangement between relatives or friends that says, hey, let's buy the cool place in Hermosa and we'll split it up throughout the year. We, this this doesn't go to that, nor would I advise us to to attempt to regulate that. It's really geared towards these third-party non purchasers. You can kind of, that's kind of synonymous with, you know, an uninterested party, typically a business that that this is their business model. This is how they make money. They buy up housing stock, they then sell interest in it and collect a fee on top.
Okay, so then using that business model example, a company could come in and buy that entire unit next to me and then subdivide that?
Correct, as drafted in this ordinance, if that's in the C one zone and they get a conditionally use permit, that 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 would be allowed, yes.
Okay, as opposed to in the C three or C two?
Correct, but as Director Naughton astutely pointed out, that really is a a policy choice.
Okay.
And so that is for you all to decide tonight.
Okay, so let me take this a step further. So there is a commercial building on Hermosa Avenue. Could a company purchase that commercial building, build on top of that residential, upzone that property, which is what they'd be doing, right? Uh, and then s- sell that or sell that under this scenario in one eighth shares?
Correct, if that property was in the C one zone.
Right.
And they got all of the required discretionary approvals to do so, yes, as as drafted, this ordinance would would permit that.
Okay, thinking by a commercial property, upzone it into residential. Because they could, they can take what is now a commercial property, right? If I were to go to the city tomorrow with my commercial piece of property, could I build a residential on top of that?
So is this, eh, once again, in in a C one zone?
You're correct.
Director Naughton, off the top of my head, I I believe that is for, but I I.
Yes, residential uses above ground floor commercial are conditionally permitted in the C one. So they would have to go through discretionary entitlements to to obtain that that right to have residential above commercial. But anyone could come in and propose something within the development standards in that zoning district for that scenario.
Okay, so then, let me take that a step further then. So I own this commercial piece of property. I build it. I form an LLC and sell one-eighth shares in said property. That's okay?
If 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 you do not remain a purchaser, i.e. so if you no longer retain an interest in that in that LLC, then then you would fall under the guise of this ordinance and then, but yes, as drafted, that would be okay. The 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 key term that I, you know, gonna keep repeating and and is is third-party non purchaser. So if you own property in the in 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 the C one zone, I mean, as of right now, that's that is that is permitted. If you own property in the C one zone and you wanna build a residence on top of it, and you wanna hold that as an LLC, the city allows you to do that, provided you go through the 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 proper entitlement channels. And that's that's your property, you you're you're allowed to do with that what you want. Once again, what we we're trying to avoid here, though, is by this ordinance is these companies buying up existing housing stock, not retaining any ownership interest in them, merely chopping them up, selling them off to the to the highest bidder, and then managing it and retaining a fee as these four, eight, twelve families, people, whatever, come in and out of the city.
Okay. So it sounds to me that a corporation can do it or an owner of this commercial property can do it. One can do, one does it on the front side, the LLC comes in, purchases the property, sells it one eighth shares, or I have a property, I convert it, form an LLC, and then can sell one eighth shares.
I mean, yes, all of those hypotheticals from where I sit right now do seem plausible, yes, that that's something that
Okay.
occur, once again, provided everything you do is up to the development standards and you get all required necessary approvals.
Okay. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Councilmember Ramada?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, thanks for the report. I um, why, why, why do we want timeshare?
I mean, that that really is a, I guess, a a policy decision for 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 you all. The timeshare use and I've already kind of picked up on some potential tension tonight in terms of, hey, is it more like a residence? Is it in that universe? Is it in that ballpark, whatever metaphor you wanna use? Or no, is it more like, hey, you're in the hotel motel space, you're kind of more like that? Um, you know, that that's, those are the valid question, valid policy debate for for you all to have. Um, why we want them, yeah, I guess that's that's really up for you. And then I would say that the 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 timeshare use while unique, um, I would say is a bit comparable, whatever side of that coin that 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 you wanna look at. And so from a potential, you know, defense of of any ordinance or 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 any position, prohibiting that specific type of use wholesale anywhere in the city where we allow hotel motel hostel use, short-term vacation rental, provided you that you comply with all the required requirements. Um, that, you know, it it is a Blaney's decision, the city has a general police power, but I think that you understand where I'm coming from in terms of the 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 potential tension there of of why that specific use in and of itself is prohibited citywide when all of the other uses are at least permitted somewhere.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, to, does the Coastal Commission offer any guidance on or have any preference on timeshares at all in coastal cities?
I am not aware of a of a any formal position that they have taken. Um, in very, very low-level interactions with them um, in this jurisdiction a- and others. I have felt the that they kind of say, hey, this could be one potential visitor-type serving. Um, so that's that's there. I I am now going to prognosticate, so please do not hold me to this. I would think, though, that if, you know, the removal of of housing stock for this type of use, which inherently is kind of, hey, you're only there for a certain amount of time versus I live here in the community and I'm a member, I would think they may have a potential issue with that, but that's pure conjecture on my part.
All right, thank you, and then, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but typically, timeshare ownerships are someone's second home, so to speak, or third home, or but not their primary residence, correct?
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for now, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Mary, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have a kind of a general question about the ongoing process to review all of the the zoning codes um, vis a vis our, you know, implementation of Plan Hermosa, et cetera, goals. And and this particular ordinance related to one one commercial zone, uh, do they intersect at all? Is this something that's a sort of a short-term situation potentially, given that process? Um, if anybody could speak to how they're related, if they are.
Well, I can go ahead and and jump in, Councilmember Campbell. Um, in terms of the the long-term project with the zoning code update, um, the Planning Commission has been working really hard um, in um, looking at the zoning code update. Currently, we're meeting with the commission twice a month um, to get through all of the various components of Title seventeen. And we're looking potentially at um, early twenty twenty-three of um, bringing forward a new Title seventeen to adopt. Um, I will have to defer to Assistant City Attorney Donigan um, to provide a little more background how um, this ended up with the Planning Commission in the early spring. Um, I believe it was a commissioner-initiated item um, that first um, brought this onto a planning commission agenda for discussion and then direction to bring back a draft ordinance, mainly because, as I understand it, these businesses are are advertising a lot. Um, there's been a lot of press um, for these emerging-type businesses, and it's it's happening throughout the state. So there are a lot of cities right now trying to understand how or if they should be regulating this type of use, how it fits in um, as a residential use, as a more commercial type use. Um, and so my understanding is that there was a sense of immediacy um, to address this now rather than wait um, for the comprehensive update. But that's certainly something that would be at the council's discretion. If you feel like this would be better suited to be folded into that longer-range discussion. Um, and it's not too far off. Um, we're pretty far along with that zoning code update. So if the council did decide that this discussion should be folded into that longer-term view, um, we're talking about a couple of months, um, not a year to two years.
Wow, uh, very helpful and right on target with my curiosity, thank you. Um, was that part of the discussion in the in the commission? This uh, timing consideration and you know, the the ability to look at this in the context of y- you know, not only all the com- commercial zones and what may or may not be, you you know, indicated as potential changes, but just the whole, you know, the city and where things belong, where where there may be better part. Um, as opposed to looking at one relatively small zone chunk of property areas, yeah.
Well, a lot of the discussion was focused on potential changes due to the housing element update. Um, and and that's that's certainly appropriate. And and the commission during their deliberations felt like maybe that discussion might be be better taken or better had um, when the housing element update, if it were to contemplate any changes in the zoning to allow housing where it's not currently allowed, um, that this type of discussion might be better suited for that. Um, however, there was that sense of immediacy and and the desire to protect the existing housing stock in the city um, from these types of uses. Um, I think there was a sense that it's it's this emerging business. It's a lot of cities are grappling with it, so we need to get some protections in place now um, before it becomes more of an after-the-fact enforcement regulation-type situation. Um, but again, um, that's that that was contemplated more so in the context of the housing element update and any changes that would trigger the zoning code.
Okay, great, and you know, I don't know what kind of, I mean, it's all already been work go- going into this and you help reveal also why it came up, when it came up, and that it's related to some other big topics in town, like like the housing element um, process and requirements. So uh, that said, uh, one more at least question I have at this juncture is, I hope uh, you and staff got a chance to see, we only had two comments come in, they're fairly um substantive, and if there's if there's anything uh, you want to um, address specifically, and I I, one of the things I was gonna ask about was notification um, during this process to nearby properties, residential properties in these C one areas, is is that something that happened? Or is it was, please just uh, let us have a sense of that.
So all all and Assistant City Attorney Donigan, feel free to weigh in. But any anytime there are citywide regulations um, as opposed to a very specific development project, um, we do notice, publish legal notices in the paper. We post on our website, we provide all of the necessary legal requirements for noticing. As it, how that differs, when you're talking about a citywide ordinance change or zone tax amendment or some type of other hearing, um, when you're looking at a specific development site, you will notice within a three hundred or five hundred foot radius of that project site, um, depending on whether it's a residential or a commercial site. So in this case, because it was a citywide regulation, we didn't send out notification in a certain radius. Um, but we did meet all the legal requirements for noticing for this type of action.
Sure, and then just to follow up on that, Director Naughton, you know, we as staff can propose and as we have done, but but really, it is ultimately up to the city decision-makers. So the Planning Commission could have went a different direction. They could have said, we like this use, we want it throughout the city. And so that's why, as Director Naughton said, when it's kind of these citywide things, there's a different noticing because it would seem to be not odd or playing favorites that, hey, if we only notice those properties next to the C C one zone, and they all came out and said, we like it, we don't like it, whatever it may be, but didn't do it to say the R two or R three zone, then you kind of, it's you you're basically, you know, the only fair way to do it other than provide this this, a- as Director Naughton did say, the the legally required. But any extra notice would seemingly require us to send a mail notice to every property owner in the city.
Mm-hmm, okay, great. Um, I think I have one more question um, for Jeannie or anybody who has a thought on this. Given what you shared about the timeline for the comprehensive zoning updates uh, being kind of right upon us as well, uh, is there potential benefit in um, the idea that we might pause on this one piece and um, include it in that process so that uh, potentially this model, if it's a model that's viable, that we should consider or enable, you know, responsibly, et cetera, eh, it would have a broader consideration of where it belongs, best belongs, knowing that right now it is not an allowable model in the other um, commercial areas. So is that wi- would that be achieved by um, potentially pausing this so that this conversation can be rolled into that one? And if you will, open up some more possibilities and ways of looking at um, it comprehensively?
Please, Director Naughton, after you.
I I was just gonna say, Councilmember Campbell, that that's certainly a question for you and the rest of the City Council to decide tonight. Um, that that's, I I think you've you've posed a a great question for discussion amongst the rest of the City Council.
Okay, and and no, um, flip, the flip of that question would be, would there be any risks to that we haven't talked about yet that for waiting, for 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 not acting immediately?
Sure, so so I wouldn't necessarily call it a risk, I would call it more of a of a judgment call. Obviously, from my perspective, the city is in the strongest posture. If we have a clear and explicit, you know, regulation on these types of uses, and I can point to the specific code section and say, this is what you are violating. Now, of course, like all land uses, if they are not expressly permitted in the city, they are prohibited. However, as I'm sure you are all aware with the short-term vacation rental issue, that there's always creative argument, a gray area there to say, well, Creative argument, a gray area there to say, well, it really is permitted, or that doesn't apply to me for X, Y, and Z reasons. And then you could potentially get some of these companies attempting to buy properties. And then make attempting, because as I said. It's, it's, it's an argument. Of saying, hey, I'm grandfathered in, I now have this. Once again, I'm, we, we have counter arguments to all of those. Director Norton, correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't heard too many complaints in the city about. You know, mass proliferation of this and, and these types of companies buying up, you know, existing city housing stock. So I wouldn't call it a risk, but I would call it a, a judgment call for you all tonight to kind of weigh those.
Okay, uh, thank you for those answers and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You stole, your last question was one of my questions is, you know, how does the timeline with this kind of coincide with a greater zoning update? And this is something that we can push off a couple of months. So I guess that is the conversation. We will have. As we progress. Any other questions for staff?
Anything?
All right. We go back. Adam, City Clerk, could you queue up a public comment, please?
Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and if you are joining the meeting by phone, please remember to dial star six to unmute yourself and star nine to raise your hand. And participants joining by internet, please remember to unmute yourself and please say your name for the record. We do have two speaker cards for this item. The first is Scott Hayes.
Uh, the microphone, is it on?
Better? Okay, um, the goal of this ordinance seems to be to minimize negative effects of timeshares on the residents of Hermosa Beach. Uh, the same consideration should also be given to the residents that live in and adjacent to the C one zones. According to the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, the purpose of the C one neighborhood. Commercial zone is to provide sites for a mix of small. Local businesses appropriate for and serving the daily needs of nearby residential neighborhoods. While establishing land use regulations that prevent significant adverse effects on abutting residential uses. There are two key points in this definition. Serving the needs of residential neighborhoods and preventing adverse effects on residential uses. I'll address these separately. The businesses in the C one zone, the current businesses in the C one zone include convenience stores like Mickey's, Green Store, Bacchus Grocery. Restaurants like Brothers Burrito, The Spot Bottle and Martha's, fitness centers, salons, and many others. These businesses clearly serve the daily needs of nearby residential neighborhoods as intended by the code. I do not see what resident need would be served by a time share. Um, per the staff report. Timeshare increases the likelihood of frequent gatherings and parties generating noise in excess of what the neighborhood normally generates. Staff workers on state that time shirt owners and visitors will most likely stay out later, entertain more, and gather in large numbers while on vacation. Um, effectively, timeshares are hotels. That, I mean, we can call them what they want, but, you know, they, they, they are effectively will serve as hotels. Um, so if timeshares are not serving the daily needs of nearby residential neighborhoods. And will cause significant adverse effects on abutting residential uses. Why are we even considering them in the C one zone? People live in the C one zone, as, uh, Mayor Pretend mentioned, he lives across the street from, uh, three units. I live across the street from a mixed-use unit, which is also an illegal Airbnb, by the way. Um, and. You know, so we're saying that it's not okay to have, uh. These timeshares in residential areas, but C one is a res- is also a residential area. People live there. Um, uh, timeshares, as I said before, timeshares are hotels. Um, the hotels are specifically excluded from C, the C one zone. So I don't understand why we're allowing them there and why we're not pushing them to the C two and C three. Um, eventually, these timeshares are going to end up as, um, short-term vacation rentals. This, if there's a one eighth, um, uh. Uh, ownership, they're going to get six weeks, they're not going to use all their weeks, they're going to put them up in Airbnb guaranteed. I live across from one already, I've lived next to two underused properties, there's a good chance that I can live next to three of these things. Um, who's going to deal with these problems? We live next to a bar. We knew that when we bought the house, we knew what we were in for. Um, when there's a problem at the bar. I call the bar and they take care of the problems. Who do I call when there's a problem at this short-term, or sorry. At this time share. Um, there's nobody to call, so, so I have to call the, the police or code enforcement. And we all seen how well they deal with the short-term vacation rentals. Um, I, I know I'm running short. Um, I think that the solutions here are to, uh, define timeshares in the municipal code as a hospitality use. And subject them to the same criteria as, and zoning as hotels. Or allow timeshares at commercially zoned parcels with non-conforming residential uses similar to the short-term vacation rentals. Um, uh, or allow timeshares in locations where hotels are permitted. Um, if that means we have to wait until the zoning code gets updated, I think that's worth doing. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Rachel Hayes.
Hi, my name is Rachel Hayes. I live on, um, First Street in Hermosa Beach. Um, I'm worried about our C one zone. I, I think it's, it's awesome having these small businesses. And then the fact that they can put a residence above it, which adds residential stock to the city, which the state does require that we zone for adding residential properties. Um, I'm afraid. That if we were to zone our C one to allow, um. If, if it actually says in our zoning that we allow timeshares. Those corporations are going to buy these properties, these existing business, tear down what's there and put a big house there. And it's not renting. The way timeshares work. Is people buy in, um, they can either buy a week or they can buy points. And then there's, there's these brokers where all the timeshares can put units into these brokerages. So how they can sell more timeshares and say, well, if we don't have a, a unit available for you on whatever island you want to go to. Look on our, um, it's called Dex or International or something, I forgot what it's called, but, um, yeah, Interval International, those are. The brokers who kind of like get timeshares from all the time share companies. So. So. So basically, you, you're not really renting, you're using your points or you're, you're giving your week up to go use another week somewhere else. So it is, we are talking about. Short-term vacationers. I'm not going to call them renters because they're not renting. And I believe one thing you should definitely look into is. The reason why timeshares don't have prime property in most cities, they're mostly on the outskirts, it's because they don't bring in income. Hotels get short-term tax, but, but time share is owner occupied. So they don't have that income, which is why I don't recommend that you even put it in the C two zone. Because you'd rather have hotel income than timeshares. So, um. So I don't, I really don't see what benefit there would be to the city because you wouldn't be getting taxed, you actually could get a tax out of the short. The illegal Airbnb, you can at least tax that owner, or he should be paying his taxes on when you rent it. And you have a person that owns that house that you can hold accountable for. Any problems with that house. I'm afraid that with a time share, there's going to be, there's nobody to call. It, it's, it's just going to be. It, it's, I mean, there, there's, I mean, even the city in the, um, the write-up, they said you really don't want these in the residential neighborhoods. Well, please don't ruin our C one zone by putting. Time share in our C one zone. And I'm afraid if you. If you put it in the code that it's, it can go there, they're going to buy those properties. And then you've opened Pandora's box and no CUP is going to stop them. Currently, the, um. The illegal Airbnb, everybody who rents it, I mean, everybody goes the wrong way down the one-way street. So they don't even pay attention to a giant sign that says, do not enter. So they're not going to pay, pay attention to a CUP that they don't even know exists. So don't think that a CUP is going to control anything. So please, I do urge you, um, think about. No time share in the city if that's possible.
Seeing nobody else in person, we do have one virtual hand raised, John Davis. Your three minutes will begin, begin once you're muted.
Good evening, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Hello, oh, wonderful. Um, yeah, I just wanted to do, uh, I just kind of came in on this one. Um, you know, I just want to say, I think this does belong in a, uh, you know, a bigger conversation about the zoning. Uh, I'm, you know, I, as the previous gentleman said, is timeshares are essentially hotels. I know this ordinance, or I believe this ordinance actually removed, uh, timeshares from, uh, the C two zone. Um, you know, I just, I just think it's a topic that needs to be looked, looked at. Um, whether it belongs in C one, whether it belongs in C two, whether it belongs at all. It just seems like since we are focusing on zoning right now. Uh, it deserves, uh, to become part of a bigger conversation. So that's all I wanted to say. Uh, also, just as a side note, if it was going to, to, uh, C two zone. As the previous gentleman said, it adds, uh, vibrancy. He didn't say vibrancy, but he, it actually adds people. Which I think is also what we need in, uh, C two zones. So, uh, anyhow, but, uh, big picture. Uh, I'd love to, uh, see this, uh, kind of kick down the can, kick down the road a little bit and discuss in the, uh, broader topic of zoning. Thank you.
Next, we have a four, four, three phone number. Um, you are now unmuted and your three minutes will begin once you introduce yourself. The four, four, three number, you are now un- unmuted and your three minutes can begin now.
Mayor DeToye, members of the city council, this is Steve Izzant, one of your planning commissioners. I was the original commissioner that brought this to the attention of the commission, just to add some context to Director Norton's, uh, presentation. Uh, like some of you, I had read about Picasso, uh, purchasing a house in the wine country. Uh, and then reselling that to, uh, eight individual owners. And the local residents around that particular street were not pleased. So from my perspective. The city of Hermosa had nothing at all to regulate. Picasso coming in and buying a seven million dollar house on the strand and then selling out eight. Uh, fractional ownerships or twelve or four, whatever the right number was. So my fellow commissioners did concur that. Uh, staff should take a look at this and come back with some recommendations so that there would be. Uh, some kind of regulation within the city. So you, you do face a stark choice. Um. Uh, will you prohibit this entirely, uh, like you do bird scooters? Uh, or will you have some kind of regulation, whether it's in the C one zone or C two or somewhere else? Um, that's the issue before you tonight, but that's the, the brief history on how this came about. I just didn't want to see, uh, Picasso. Purchasing a seven million dollar house on the strand and then selling it to, uh, eight individual families. And, uh, that concludes my remarks. Uh, thank you so much for listening.
One last call for public comment. Joining us virtually. Mouse on the bottom of your screen, raise your virtual hand. Star nine, if you're joining us by telephone.
Next, we have Laura Pena. Laura, you are now unmuted and your three minutes can begin.
Hello, good, good evening again. Wow, this is really late. Um. I want to thank the, uh, mayor, Mayor Pretend and staff commissioners. Um, this thing about timeshares. Because I've been to all these zoning meetings in regards to the updates, I definitely feel this item should be tabled. I have reached out to the coastal commission to find out where they sit on timeshares. And there is an eighty-four page document, um, that's dated October twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen. And it relates to, uh, visitor-serving accommodations. And I think that if the council hasn't read this or is not privy to it, or if staff hasn't provided it, I think it needs to be read. Because I want to make sure if we are creating ordinances or regulation. I want to make sure that this is something that's not going to hurt us in trying to get a local coastal program. So that would just be my recommendation, um, have this, uh, a follow-up in our zoning code. Um, that we're currently doing right now, but then also get ahold of this report, um, from the coastal commission. Dated October twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you. One last call for public comment. Mouse on the bottom of the screen, raise your virtual hand, star nine to raise your hand, if you're joining us by telephone. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Look for any comments, questions, or emotion. Mayor Pretend. I just had one comment, I think, uh, and believe me, I'm not. An advocate for Picasso, but I think they would. Object to being. Labelled a time share as, as well as these other companies. Because I think unlike. A time share as we know it. My understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Mister City Attorney, I mean, you are actually buying and are being deeded. Eighth interest. In real property. As opposed to. Buying time in a unit or a similar unit. Is that a distinction between Picasso, uh? My understanding correct?
Hmm, correct. And, and so we. Attempted to obtain some of, you know, Picasso's documents in terms of, hey. I'm a, I'm a potential purchaser, what does this look like? So. From what my understanding is, and once again, this is, this is an educated guess at, at best, is that there's kind of two different ways to do it. The one that you just described, that, you know, I have a one-eighth interest and the deed on that says, you know. Pat Donigan or insert anyone's name. The other one, of course, being the LLC or corporate entity route, the. Benefits, or not the benefits, but the pros that I read to that is, of course, alien ability. I can sell it quick. There's not a large transaction, I don't need to get the county recorder in. If I'm short on cash, rather than say, buy my one-eighth interest in a, somewhere and go through that process, I can say. Here's one eighth interest in shares of an LLC. This is what it is, what, what will you give me for it? And boom, it's done.
Thank you. Any thoughts? Alfr Massey.
Yeah, uh. I think Commissioner Hayes has it right, frankly, um. You look at section seventeen point twenty-six point twenty of our municipal code subsection B one. C one neighborhood commercial zone. To provide sites for a mix of small local businesses appropriate for and serving the needs of nearby residential neighborhoods. While establishing land use regulations that prevent significant advert- adverse effects on abutting residential units, uses, um. I view timeshares as. More resident, more, excuse me, more commercial in character than residential. Uh, probably by a long shot. Um. I can only imagine living next to a fractional ownership house divided eight ways, which. I suspect it's correct, will end up being sublet via Airbnb on shorter terms than the. Three months of the year or two months of the year, whatever it is that each person gets. Or on a one-twelfth basis. It, it would be like living next to, uh. People who are on vacation all year round, constantly. Um, I wouldn't want that anywhere near me, uh, frankly. We talked about this when we talked about short-term vacation rentals and the importance of stability. Um, in our residential neighborhoods, how that relates to our quality of life. I have to tell you, I frankly think we have enough overnight accommodation in the city. Um, and so I'm, I would be open to flatly prohibiting timeshares and fractional ownership. Throughout the city, but if we're going to. Um, consider timeshares. I think the C one zone is not appropriate for them because they're more commercial in character than residential. And they certainly don't fit. The kind of. Small-scale residence-serving, daily need of residence-serving, uh, business. That our C one zone is supposed to be set aside for. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I certainly. Want to just, uh, thank Commissioner Izzant and the Planning Commission for trying to get ahead of the. Picasso invasion that is invariably, uh. Undoubtedly coming to a city near us, um, if not us already. Um, but I agree with. Commissioner Hayes and my council member. That, uh, C one is not the right place. Um, if we're looking to put in. This commercial-like establishment, then it should be in the commercials. This commercial like establishment, then it should be in the commercials zone, maybe in the C three area. And I, you know, there are several places that might make sense. So. I am not in favor of moving forward with this as it's currently drafted. And I think should be rolled up into the discussion, I think, as council member Campbell mentioned. With regard to the zoning code update is probably the best place for that. Discussion. Thank you.
Councilor Motta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely think we need to take some kind of action tonight, particularly since unless I've understood this conversation wrong. Our code doesn't, isn't explicitly prohibiting time shares. Am I wrong?
Correct. Yeah, there's, there's not a, you know, there's time shares does not appear in in our zoning code.
So I think we end if, you know, it's our city attorney's opinion that. Picasso model is a form of time share, which I would concur with as well. And I think many others would. I think we need to take some kind of action tonight to prohibit it. If. It wouldn't stand that there would be a blanket prohibition across our city. Fine, let's put it in the C two or C three zone, you know. I don't know, Madam City Manager, if you have an opinion on that. Seeing how, you know, this staff report had been redlined and. Changed from including the C two zone. So.
No, I think this has been a really great discussion with community member feedback. I think the C two zone, because it's already part of the discussion for the zoning code update makes sense. My concern with adding it to C three is that we are then competing with sites that we have identified. In the housing element as creating housing. And with the size of our city and the limitations. For achieving our housing numbers within the next eight years. I wouldn't want us to add another layer to compete with that. So if you're considering the C two or C three, the C two makes more sense from that standpoint. And ultimately, it's, it's your decision, but I think that's, that's what the staff recommendation would be.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. Um. So, Mr. City Attorney, when we look at. The draft ordinance. So everywhere that it states C one, we could replace it with C two.
Yeah, that, that type of amendment would be. Very, very simple in the realm of of modifications. You're exactly right. And then, of course, the, the change to that, to the. Section three and the ordinance, which is section 17.26030, of course, under uses in the C one, C two, C three. That U, which stands for, you know, subject to a conditional use permit, would just be moved over one column to the right under the C two, if that were the direction of the council.
Okay, thank you. That sounds like an easy change and something I would support for this evening. Assuming I have my colleagues' support. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds like a great motion.
I just have a clarifying question. So as I read. 17.2630 hotels and motels are permitted in C two and C three. If we revise the ordinance to. Allow this fractional ownership or time share activity in C two. What change would we need to make to? Section 17.26.30?
So we would be, if you, we would basically just, and so I, I understand the comparison and. Time shares as similar to hotels, but as drafted, they, they will be distinct and separate uses. So the only thing that we would need to do is we would add, under the uses, we would add a time share use. And then put a U in the, in the, in the C two zone saying it is, is subject to a conditional use permit. As of right now, there is no use for time share. That's kind of the genesis of kind of why we're here.
Got it. So we'd be adding a new line item to 172634 time shares slash fractional ownership or whatever, however we wanted to describe it. And then in the column for C two would be the only column that had a U, which is. Conditionally allowed. And then C one and C three would be not allowed, right?
You're correct.
Okay. If we were to do that, would we need to add a definition of time share somewhere in the code, in the municipal code? Because the suggestion is made that. We define time shares in the municipal code as hotels or motels and. And then that would allow them in zones where hotel use is allowed. I presume the problem there is in it would also allow them in C three if they were just. Considered to be hotels or motels as opposed to their own separate category. So I guess that's the issue there. We don't want to allow this in C three. Can I just ask a conceptual question? Is there anything preventing us from simply prohibiting? Time shares or fractional ownership citywide?
No.
All right. Well, I'm open to that. Idea as well myself, but that's maybe a broader conversation.
Wait, can you repeat that? Sorry.
There's nothing that prohibits us from simply adopting an ordinance prohibiting time shares or fractional ownership in the city. In any zone. And so. Well, I'm open to that, subject to hearing some unintended consequences that I.
I'd be totally fine with that, but I thought per our conversation earlier that it wasn't advisable.
And so if I gave that inclination, I apologize. The only thing I was, I was trying to posit is that. Should this ordinance already challenge, which we haven't heard from, from anyone, actually challenging it. The argument I would predict they would make if it is banned citywide is kind of they would either throw themselves. In the boat as hotels and motels and say, it is unfair that you have banned us, but not this similar use. Similarly, they would say, throw themselves in the boat of short term vacation rentals and say. We're like them and you allow them somewhere. Why not us? Once again, my position as, as you should put forth in the, in the staff report. And the ordinance is that they are different uses. I think we can draw distinctions between those relatively easily. And, and, and provided that's the, the, the direction of the city council, it is permitted, absolutely. But. As you guys all are aware, those would be kind of the challenges, of course, versus allowing it somewhere in the city. Now all of a sudden, there's no argument. It's a, hey, you can do it over here. So just do it over there versus a, you are, you have arbitrarily or capriciously. Prohibited this use entirely, and that's unfounded or, or baseless. Those are just, you know, worries, you know, I wouldn't even say worries. Potential issues to contemplate. But if that is the direction of the city council to ban them citywide. And once again, of course, if we ever are challenged, we can always revisit it if, if, if we think, hey. Whether when we see it, they may actually have a better argument than the one I just articulated tonight, and we need to change. We, of course, can do that.
Well, let me further complicate this and put my juris doctorate to work and say. Could we also do a prohibition on time shares and then a springing? Conditional allowance of them in C two, which is basically what we're considering here in the event that a court invalidated the citywide prohibition on time shares. So in other words. We would, it would automatically. Do what we had talked about initially, if we were to allow it conditionally in the C two zone. In the event that a citywide prohibition were overturned by a court.
I don't see where I sit tonight. I don't see any, any, any reason not to. However, I would say that, that would take some. Changes to the ordinance, much more in depth than the, than the, than the amendment that council member Campbell. So that would be something that. We could investigate. And if that's the direction of the council, we would, of course, bring that back to you all to ensure that the language that you, you know, that. It is directed is effectuated appropriately.
Well, and I guess a fair question is, if we did that, are we sort of taking? Some of the prerogative away from the planning commission to try to balance uses and consider zoning generally. If we just said. We're going to ban time shares citywide. I don't know. I don't have a great answer. But what I will say is that. If we were to move forward with an ordinance of the type proposed tonight, I am. Far more comfortable. In fact, in simplest terms, I will support it if it substitutes C two for C one.
Because right now drafted, you meant C one for C two, correct?
No, we would, we want to, we would replace the references to C one with references to C two.
Perfect.
But I'm open to that, but I'm also open to the broader conversation. I'm just. Now worried that if we were to do a citywide prohibition on time shares, we'd be taking away. Some of the more thoughtful deliberation that the planning commission is undertaking.
Mayor Portem.
Well, what if? If we had a prohibition across the board and the planning commission is going to be deliberating. Deliberating over and discussing the zoning code update, could they not come back then? And say, hey, we've carefully considered and here are some areas where we could. Look at putting such properties and then. We can address that then.
They clearly could unless.
That's going to be happening in the next couple of months. So that deliberative process will inform. Better inform us as to where, if anywhere, we should consider these.
I also think the overarching conversation with our housing element too, unless he's counted as eight units that we're putting on the market. Some of the C two and C three zones that Simander said are going to be. Probably possibly having overlay with the possible units in the future. So I mean, there's a lot of moving parts with this right now.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, I mean, just a.
11 11.
Quick. Yeah, true. Um. I, just with a quick search, I mean, it's St. Helena. That banded and then Picasso sued them, Palm Springs. And I, I don't know, maybe Mr. City Attorney is a better idea of. How many cities have been sued by this company because they had a blanket prohibition. On time shares throughout their city and then it looks like St. Helena, it's dangerous, just Googling this stuff. Then switched over to allowing it in their commercial zone. With a COP.
Correct. And the, the city of St. Helena is represented by Best, Bestin Krieger. I had the opportunity to speak to people. I, I don't do any work for them. And, and, and you're right, that, that is a risk. I'm not entirely sure why. Picasso selected them out of, out of the other cities. Maybe they thought. You know, there was some weakness there, maybe. And once again, don't quote me on this. They had some first amendment claims in there too about, you know, because they, they really went after some. Local real, real estate brokers who attempted to advertise and sell this, but, but, but council member Campbell, you. Kind of, you know, hit the nail right on the head of kind of my previous concern that, yes, obviously a blanket prohibition. Is a much, is, is a bit more ominous legal position than saying, yeah, you can do it here because as I said, they'll just, they can, you know. Say, hey, you allow these other uses, not us, and then create legal theories and legal arguments from there.
Okay. Well, thank you. I mean, that, that makes me feel like. Switching out C one for C two is probably the safer route, even though I'd love a citywide prohibition.
Mary, have your hand up? Both hands up.
Yeah, my thoughts to add are, I, I feel like this, this is not like the issues of CCA where we. We know a lot about it. At this stage, so to kind of preemptively figure out where we're going to land, I think does short. Shortcut unnecessarily and unwisely a broader consideration. I don't even know if I would be for or against. A fractional ownership property because I don't know enough about the differences in the models. That said, it does sound to me in listening tonight that it should be part of the larger conversation. Which has a lot of different kind of angles to look at it. It's not just one or the other. I don't think every vacation or is, is a terrible neighbor. Some are, some aren't. And then there, that's. That's more like an enforcement challenge. I really, and I, I thought I'd heard Jeannie suggest, or maybe, maybe Patrick as well. That we're close to having that conversation come before us. And also there wasn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, there wasn't some big rush. To establish these here or even all over the place. So I'm not sure if I misheard that. If, if that were the case, and we are close to the conversation, I would. Be most comfortable with parking it there. I don't have a strong opposition to putting a backstop in the interim. Like the swap the C two for the C one, if it doesn't. Cause a problem for the zoning update conversation, or if we, if we, you know, kind of. Figured that it was the safest thing to create a, a backstop. Alternative. Just in case, but I mean, if it's that close, I think, why wouldn't we wait to hear and learn more about this? Option, all the ins and outs, educate ourselves and then fit it into the larger conversation about what we want to do with our zoning to support our, our future. City growth and evolution. And that's kind of my two cents. So I could do without it unless someone scared me into. Without a stopgap, unless the conversation led us that we should be really scared that something would happen in two months to. That we would, you know, have regrets. If not otherwise acting tonight to. You know, really nail something down.
Thank you for that. Seems like there's a two paths forward, the C one. C two replacement of C one or receiving file. Seems like there can sense this on the stopgap. Replacement.
I mean, I would support changing out C one for C two. Yeah.
Perfect. Let's get a motion going.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, how do I indicate that we're replacing C one for C two and the various other changes that you mentioned?
So, so I would, I would posit that the. Safest and cleanest way to, to, to do it. Is of course, you know, read the recommendation and then when you say as amended, and that, that amendment would simply say. Replace any reference to C one to C two. Just want to make sure that. Yeah, C two doesn't appear anywhere, anywhere there. And then. Amend. Section three of the ordinance, which deals with section 17.26030 to merely move the U. In the C one column to the C two column.
Okay, so amend section two.
Replace.
Or section three, sorry you said. To replace.
I'm sorry. So, so section three is the, is a little chart. So the amendment to that would be move the U from C one to C two. Apologize, I'm kind of going backwards here. And then section two of the ordinance, which is kind of the meat of, of, of that, that new section. Replace all reference to C one to C two.
Yep. Okay, got it. Thanks. I'll move that we consider. Waiting full reading and introduced by title only in ordinance of the city of Hermosa Beach, California, amending chapter 17.40. To add section 17.40.230 time share uses to title 17. And amending section 17.26.030 to permit time share uses. In specified commercial zones pursuant to a conditional use permit and determining that the project is exempt. From the California Environmental Quality Act. Noting amending the ordinance to replace any reference of C one with C two. And amending section three to replace or to move. C one to C two. I'm not looking at that chart, so I'm not seeing it. Sorry.
The motion suffice, Mr. City Attorney?
It sure does. Yes.
All right. Is there a second?
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment for consideration. It would be simply. To add and until this. This consideration can be readdressed. It will be in place until. It, it will be in place until and that conversation has played out uh, so that it can be, um, included in that broader conversation, which is essentially right around the corner. So all I'm really suggesting is that if, or maybe not unclear about is, is this motion mean that this is the end of this conversation about this consideration for fractional ownership? Like it will forever be in, you know, C two and not be discussed.
Let's get a second first.
Well, that was.
Just for.
Well, and, and, and so, yeah, I mean, so my response to that is this does not bind you in, in perpetuity if, if the, if throughout the, the housing element and zoning code update. And once again, you know, staff is here, we, we understand. I think it's clear that if the planning commission were to ask us, well, the city council acted, right? So we don't need to think about this. Our answer, of course, is going to be absolutely not. Go ahead, take a fresh look at it. If there's different factors and different things, you're more than willing and welcome to bring change or modification, anything like that as pertains, you know, to this issue. And when that comes before you all, you're more than welcome to, you know, go with that change, modify your decision tonight, or keep your decision tonight, whatever, whatever the pleasure of the council is.
Okay. And the reason for the amendment is just to make clear what our direction is about this decision. Because.
Correct. Yeah, there's.
It could be ambiguous otherwise.
Correct. Yeah, that would be fine. There from my perspective, there's no substantive change being made to the ordinance by that amendment, albeit it is clear direction that, you know, should staff knock on wood completely overhaul it in the next three or four months, there's still great direction there.
Mr. Mayor, before I get a second, I just want to clarify now that I'm looking at the chart, I can see exactly what you were saying. So I want to be clear in the motion that we're amending section three to, to move the letter U from under C one over to under C two.
Very clear.
Thanks.
All right. I will second that motion. Motion from Councilwoman Armando, second from myself. Any other comments?
Are you seconding it as amended or is the amendment more just of a gloss on the thing to give staff an idea that, um, we're not seeking to foreclose their further consideration of the issue, but we do, or we are obviously adopting an ordinance.
I think that's implicit in any of the decisions that we make. I, yeah, not.
I agree, but I thought that was the nature of the friendly.
That's a, I mean, and I'll just say that with this one last thing is I don't think it's implicit, um, as, as is the case many other times and is, which is partly why we get fragments of issues that are interrelated without, without, um, perhaps doing it in the right order or with, with the right breadth of, um, considerations. So it was just to be clear that this decision is not to, you know, to indicate that this is where we have landed. Um, because what was brought to us today was let's land it in C one, right?
Um, yeah, no, and I hear what you're saying. And I, I think I, I'm crystal clear in my thoughts on this. Um, and I've been concerned about companies like Picasso and others similar companies coming into Hermosa. They will come. Um, so unless we are clear about where they can have these properties, um, it will remain ambiguous. And I think if we send the message that we're not totally sure that this can't exist in other parts of, you know, the neighborhoods, then I don't know, maybe they'll start buying up properties and lobbying the next council to try to get it approved, which they could still do. But I certainly don't want to come out of the gate sending that message. I think that this use is totally inappropriate in any of our residential zones. And I think there's been a really good argument made for why it would also be inappropriate in the C one, uh, commercial zone. These, um, you know, they, they're, these are uh, ownerships of, uh, eight, they, they're LLCs half the time. It's not even individuals. It's not their primary residence. Um, you know, you never know who's going to be there. We have heard this story over and over with short-term vacation rentals. Um, our residents want to know, you know, who's living next door. Um, whether they're renting or otherwise, uh, it just can't be a fly-by-night, you know, three-day stay and then it's someone else and they'd come with five cars and ah, you know, I, I, I empathize with that and I wouldn't want that as a neighbor either. So um, I really don't view it much differently than the impacts of short-term vacation rentals in our neighborhood. And I think, uh, having them exist in the C two zone is fair.
Mr. Mayor, so procedurally, I I think we need a clarification from the city attorney. The friendly amendment, if it were to be seconded, then would be voted on and the motion as amended would either be.
He's a substitute motion.
And if.
Was there? Well, so I mean, and so I guess I'm, and, and Councilmember Campbell, I, I apologize. At least in my mind, when, when I heard Councilmember Campbell's, you know, amendment, whatever you want to call it, as I said, it doesn't change the substance of anything that, you know, would be in the municipal code. What I was thinking is that we could include something in the minutes and, and I very much respect and was pointing over my head, Councilmember, um, our motto is concerned is that we don't want to start for every ordinance saying, hey, we can change this in the future because then implicit in that is that we couldn't. So what could be in, in Councilmember Campbell, if this is an elegant solution or maybe an elegant solution, just a solution in the minutes, we can say direction to city staff to include this conversation in the upcoming housing element and zoning code update. And that way it's not a, hey, we can change this and what about all the other ordinances you passed? And so that way it's a bit more affirmative. We have a specific, you know, process we can, we can look to, look towards, i.e. the zoning code update slash housing element. And that way it's recorded somewhere. Councilmember Campbell, it's in the minutes. It won't be in the text of the ordinance. We, I would advise against that. We don't want to put that in the, in the municipal code. But if that's something that's acceptable to the, to the city council, I guess that would be something that we could do.
Yeah. Well, I was about to say this discussion might suffice. I mean, you captured it perfectly, Patrick. It's just with the direction that this should be looked at more thoroughly. It's not, it has nothing to do with advocating that it should end up in the C one zone potentially, but I, I just think it should be, um, discussed inside of that conversation so that we, you know, make sure that we have all the information uh, at our, at our disposal when, when the final, final zoning updates come down. So with that, with it's just in the minutes that, 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 that was this conversation. Uh, you're, no one's saying it can't happen. Um, that would be perfectly fine.
So procedurally, we're good. Motion second.
Yep.
All right. Any last comments? Madam City Clerk. Oh, sorry. This public hearing is now closed. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you. Councilmember Armando.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Massey.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Jackson.
Aye.
Mayor DeToi.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And a motion to extend the meeting.
Aye.
Two items.
Uh, move that we extend the meeting to eleven fifty. Forty-five, eleven forty-five.
I'll second that. Madam City Clerk.
Right. Councilmember Armando.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Massey.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Jackson.
Aye.
Mayor DeToi.
Aye.
Motion carries. Municipal matter item fourteen A, awarded contract for employee benefit, benefits, insurance and broker consulting services to Keenan and Associates.
Welcome, Vanessa.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor DeToi, Mayor Pro Tem Jackson and members of the city council. Um, in this item before you, staff is recommending the city council awarded contract for employee benefits, insurance and broker consulting services to Keenan and Associates. Currently, the city contracts with insurance providers for our employees' medical, dental, vision and other group insurance programs. Staff works closely with and through an insurance broker to provide these insurance programs at the highest level of service and the most competitive cost to the city and its employees. A health insurance broker brings added value and expertise in negotiating health plan premiums, maintaining compliance with changing healthcare regulations and managing insurance claims. On July twenty-fifth, staff prepared and issued a, a request for proposal inviting qualified licensed insurance consultants to submit proposals through a competitive process. The RFP was advertised on the city's website, the city's online bidding platform called Planet Bids and distributed directly to known providers of these services. We received a total of six proposals in response to the RFP. The proposing consultants included Alliant Insurance Services, Bernham Benefits Insurance Services, Keenan and Associates, Maniachi Insurance Services, Newfront and USI Insurance Services. Following an initial evaluation of the proposals, staff held interviews with the top scoring consultants. Based on a review of the submitted proposals, interviews and reference checks, staff is recommending the city council awarded contract to Keenan and Associates. They demonstrated a depth of experience in assisting other public agencies with the procurement administration of employee benefits and can provide recommendations for opportunities to enhance our benefit plans. Keenan and Associates are based out of Torrance, California, and work with approximately two hundred and seventeen public agencies across Los Angeles, Orange and San Bernardino counties. So they understand public agencies and the challenges that they may face. They are proposing a commission fee structure for all health insurance programs. The fee structure is a percentage of the plan premiums and Keenan and Associates will be paid directly by the plan providers with a maximum commission of fifty thousand, three hundred annually. Keenan provides one hundred percent transparency on the compensation they receive for every client and will disclose their full compensation received by the providers to the city. Keenan also propose, is also proposing a performance satisfaction guarantee of ten percent commission if the transition in services do not meet the city's expectation. We do have two representatives from Keenan and Associates joining us virtually this evening. We have Karen Goodsite, benefits consultant and assistant vice president and Lori LoFranco, municipalities practice leader and senior vice president. They are here to help answer any questions you may have. This concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Councilman Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this message is for Karen and Lori. How does a commission fee arrangement align your interests with the city's interests? I understand that there's a cap of fifty thousand and change. But it's, the, the question just pops up in my mind. If you're getting a percentage of the cost to the city of a particular insurance contract, how does your interest in managing our costs align with, uh, the interest of your firm?
You want me to do that? Take that? Hi. Well, with Keenan, um, two things. Because we have a cap on our commission, we actually, the commissions that we're going to receive will probably be more than the fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and whatever we have over that will actually be writing a check back to the city. And it doesn't matter what carrier we work with, the commissions are going to be the same. So we spread a really broad net. We go to all the carriers available for the different coverages. And we find what's going to work best for the city. Who's going to give you the best product? Who's going to give you the best plan design? Who's going to give you the best pricing? And that's who we're going to put with the city. So this is an arrangement that we have all with most of our public sector clients. Um, some of them, we don't have the cap, but in this particular, like city of Glendale, we have the cap. Um, in this particular instance, um, there's lots of room for, um, there's lots of margin because the typical commissions paid on your products are going to exceed our cap, which doesn't give us any incentive anyway, which way or the other, um, to, to put your business with any particular carrier. So it works out extremely well for the cities. And it also means that the city is not really paying any money directly to us, which is really, um, a great arrangement for the city to have.
All right. Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Um, Madam City Clerk, do you queue up public comment, please?
Each speaker is limited to three minutes. And if you are joining the meeting by phone, please remember to dial star six to admit yourself and star nine to raise your hand. Seeing nobody in the chambers, do we have any virtual public comment at this time? I see no virtual public hands raised.
Thank you. One last call for public comment. Most on the bottom of your screen, raise your virtual hand or dial star nine. Seeing none, I'll close public comments. Bring it back to my colleagues for any comments, deliberation or motion.
Happy to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds great.
I move that we award a contract for employee benefits, insurance, broker and consulting services to Keenan and Associates for a term of three years, beginning September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two and ending on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, with an option to extend for two additional one-year periods. Authorize the mayor to execute and the city clerk to attest that proposed agreement subject to approval by the city attorney.
Motion by Councilwoman Armando, is there a second? Mayor Pro Tem with a second. Any last comments? Thank you for staying with us late, Karen and Lori. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Armando.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Massey.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Jackson.
Aye.
Mayor DeToi.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Vanessa, I forgot to, I left you out. Sorry.
Next you have item B, vacancies, public works commission term expiration schedule applicant interviews. If I may, uh, very quickly, at the last council meeting on August, actually on August the ninth, the city council directed the city clerk to advertise for applicants to fill two public works commission terms due to expire October thirty-first of this year. We did have one incumbent submit an application for reappointment and five additional applications submitted. One incumbent did decide not to submit an application. And to note, uh, we did have one late submission for your consideration in the event that you did want to invite the late submission to interview. And we are recommending that we call a special meeting on Tuesday, October eleventh at four P M. to fill both vacancies. And so, uh, staff is requesting direction on scheduling the special meeting to have these interviews and whether or not to invite the late submission to interview as well.
Look to my colleagues. Yes, Councilwoman Campbell.
Um, it's about the late submission. Is the late submission not yet represented in the attachments?
The late submission is in the attachments. Her name is Camila Eng. Um, and she did, um, share that she was abroad in a different country and had um, some issues with her connectivity and all of the applicants did confirm that they are available on Tuesday, October eleventh for a special meeting at four P M.
Okay. Uh, and that said, I just wondered, um, you know, if we ever have considered late submissions or if, if we have had a clean practice of having a deadline that is not fungible, movable.
I did, uh, speak with staff and it seems that late submissions have not been considered, uh, during the application process. Um, so she did turn it in, you know, some hours late. And so I, I wanted to at least be transparent and share that that application was submitted for your consideration. In the past, the council has opted not to interview late submissions. Um, but it is definitely your, your prerogative to do, to do so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I guess first question, is everyone available at four fifteen on October eleventh? Sounds like everyone is perfect.
And originally.
And originally, we did have the four fifteen slot, but we're recommending four o'clock due to the number of applicants if the council is open to that timeframe.
I guess before any, we should open up for public comment for any other decisions are made. All right. Any other questions for staff? Public comment, please.
Yes, and each speaker is limited to three minutes. We see nobody in the chamber. Well, we do see somebody, but no public comment. And I do have one virtual hand raise. Matt McCall, um, your three minutes will begin once you are unmuted.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Matt McCall. Uh, good evening again, Mayor Joyce, city council staff. Um, I am one of the applicants on on this is- issue as as far as the late applicant. I have to refer back to when former mayor Mike Keegan wanted to be a late applicant for the planning commission. And city councilman Massey was very disrespectful and declining his request. So I think we need to keep a precedent on that. As far as uh everything else, I'm looking forward to the interviews on the interview date, and thank you for your time.
One last call for public comment, most on the bottom of your screen, raise a virtual hand. Seeing none, I will close public comments. Uh, everyone's good at four fifteen or four o'clock, sorry, on October eleventh. Late submission, stick with best practice, you got the motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem does. Yep.
Okay, perfect.
I move that the council schedule interviews with public works commission applicants on Tuesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two at four P M. to fill two vacancies for four-year terms ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Well, do we have to include in the motion whether we are or are not going to consider the late submitted applicant?
We are not considering, right?
And that.
I'm sorry, it's your motion.
And that the council will consider the five applicants that were submitted in a timely manner.
Good clarification.
Are you good with the uh amendment? All right. Any other questions? Councilwoman Campbell, are you good? All right, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Armando?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Massey?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor DeToi?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Tentative future agenda items. Oh, mobile parking. Any questions? All right, and then I'll bring us to adjournment. This meeting is adjourned at eleven forty-two, three minutes. There will be a special meeting on Tuesday, October eleventh at four P M. for public works commission applicant interviews. The regular meeting on October eleventh begin at five P M. for closed session, followed by open session at six P M. Thank you very much and have a great night.